It's just so stunning.
Thank you, that did work.
Hello Bonnie.
Hello, everybody.
How was the rest of your trip back?
Eight and a half hours flat.
That's good. Uneventful then.
Yeah, I mean, as expected, there was a little unpleasantness in New Jersey, but it's New Jersey.
Yeah, but if you did it eight and a half hours, you didn't have too much.
Well, I eliminated one stop. I only stopped twice.
Okay.
But.
That's good.
You know, it's, I won't say that I'm used to it, but it's, you know, it's, I'm getting more. So it was, you know, it's very interesting to come down and watch the snow begin to disappear until you get down here. And I got out of the car a couple of minutes after nine. And it was probably warmer here a couple of minutes after nine in the dark than it was the entire time I was in New Hampshire.
It happens. Tells you what the climate's like.
It's all relative.
Exactly.
A lot of change is coming. It's going to take a little longer to get there.
Yeah. All right. Well, it is 101. So I think we're all here. So that's good. So it is Friday, May, or excuse me, Friday, Friday, February the 5th at 1:00. And we are here for the first of a series of budget workshops. First of all, before we get started, I want to thank both Ellen Lorraine and Anne Marie for all the effort they put into getting this put together. I know all the various departments have submitted information and you all have worked hard to make that make sense on a budget. So I appreciate both of you for all of your efforts that you've done to put it together. Thank you very much. I noticed that we have seven people joining us today. Looks like several staff members and Nick Roth is here. So and Trina Brown Hicks is here as well. So anyway, I beg your pardon?
Doug Spellman also.
Doug Spellman, yes, thank you. So I think this really, today's meeting really belongs to Ellen Lorraine, unless Anne Marie would like to make some opening comments.
So Patty, Ellen Lorraine, do you want me to go through the presentation and then we can start? Okay, so I sent out a PowerPoint about an hour ago. I also added it to the agenda and for some reason it's just not showing up. Too many windows open, so.
Good.
Oh, you're seeing the wrong one, right? Okay, so again, this is the fiscal year that starts April 1st, 2021. Just some highlights from the budget. We are projecting a revenue decline of 3% from the approved 2021 budget. I just want to make sure that I clarify when I'm, when we're comparing the fiscal 21 budget and the fiscal 22, it does not include the amendments because the amendments really were related to, you know, COVID and some of the things that we really tried to compare where we were this time last year to where we are this time, you know, where we're projecting out of this year. So we are projecting a 3% decline in revenue from what was originally approved in March of 2020 for this year. We are, we've included an increase of 5% in the health insurance premiums beginning July 1st.
Anne Marie, could I, could I just comment on that? Yesterday, the Healthcare Commission Secretary Geisenberg announced to the commission that there would be no increase in state healthcare premiums this year.
In addition. The marketplace or for the state employees?
For the state.
Okay, so yeah, so we're.
Obviously, that's, that's subject to what happens with the budget, but the governor's budget anticipates that the healthcare premiums would remain the same.
Okay.
Okay?
And again, we have reached out to the state benefits office to get, you know, their input on that. So again, we do note that if, if we don't have to count 5% beginning in June, it saves us $20,500.
Okay.
Anne Marie, if you don't mind, I'm going to have questions as we go along. I, I hate to slow you down, but the revenue decline of 3%, can you, first of all, I don't see that on the budget itself. It looks like a proposed FY '22 budget of $6,586,000 and adopted FY '21 budget of $6,377,000.
Right, so this is actually, this is why we kind of want to go through the overview and then get into that because some of those will be addressed in future slides.
Okay, then can you just give us an overview of the, why the 3% decline?
Well, so the, the big thing is we are still looking at some decline in parking. Let me see, I'll already jump in on this because I've had numbers all over the place. So I'm trying to make sure that I.
No, we, we adjusted some of the revenues. We kind of went off some of the amended budgeted revenues, which would show a decline in revenue when you compare it to the adopted 2021 budget. For example, mercantile licenses, that's account number 10420000. Where the adopted FY 2021 budget, it was 268500. We amended it to 250,000. The proposed 2022 budget is projected at 250,000. So that's a reduction over the adopted 2021 budget.
I'm puzzled by the top line of the entire workbook, but we'll get.
But I'll get to that in.
Okay.
A couple of slides because, you know, so we, we have an obligation to present you a balanced budget. And it's, it's really in how we balance it. So that, I'll get to that in a couple of slides.
Can I ask, can I ask one quick question? 3% works out to what dollar amount?
Ellen Lorraine?
I'm telling you.
90,000.
Wait, when you compare the proposed FY 2022 to the 2021, when you pick out the prior year reserve pool, which is 384,000, you're going to see our revenues went down approximately 175,000.
I'm sorry, come again, it broke up when you gave.
Our revenues went down 175,000.
So I think you just answered my earlier question, Ellen Lorraine. The FY '21 number that you were comparing to was after you had pulled out the reserve, the reserve contribution.
Right.
Right, it shows an increase because it has to pull from prior year reserves. When you take that out, there's a reduction in revenues.
Thank you.
So we've got a number of staffing changes included in the draft budget. One is taking the parking enforcement supervisor and making it a year-round full-time position. What we're finding with revenue collection, enforcement of the three-hour meter, dealing with tickets, getting the equipment ready before the season and, and, you know, shut down and taken care of after the season really starts to become something that is not confined to those months that we currently have somebody on staff. We've also added two additional seasonal parking enforcement officers for Cedar Street area, Lewis Beach, the, all of the streets that we've talked about in the, in the parking committee meetings. We've added one additional police officer, one maintenance staff person. We've budgeted for a part-time employee for scanning for our electronic filing system. And this isn't a big ticket item or anything, but we did, we are, we have accounted for moving the lifeguards to the Parks and Marina Administrator. We have embedded 1.3% pay raises for city employees. This is based off of the social security COLA table that Ellen Lorraine reviewed. And then the police raises are consistent with the Teamsters contract excluding the non-bargaining, the lieutenant and the chief. At this point, are budgeted to get the same 1.3% that the civilians have gotten.
And the admin, Anne Marie?
Yes.
So just, if I can, if I could, I pay no attention to the person behind me there. I just want to thank you for putting the raise in, at least the race for discussion going in now as opposed to in prior years where we haven't done it until the very end because it gives us a much more realistic document to work from. So thank you.
And I agree with Bonnie on that. I think it was my suggestion that we, that we regard a COLA increase as semi-automatic, but I'd like to rethink that in the course of our discussions and perhaps make it a pool. But still, as Bonnie says, it's a good thing to, to plug it in to our budget number now.
Again.
So just so we had one thing, I mean, I don't know about a pool and we can have, certainly have a full discussion about it, but my basic experience has always been with employees that if they are performing at a satisfactory level based on their reviews, that you at least keep them, you don't, they at least hold their own through a COLA. So, you know, just, I'm just offering that as my, my personal view about cost of living increases is they're not raises in the traditional sense. They're simply treading water kind of thing. So just.
That was my argument last year. I would like to revisit that though, when the time comes.
I think we can get to that later in the discussion.
Yep.
So the total revenues, you can see the total revenues and the total general fund expenses balance at $6,586,975. But as Ellen Lorraine mentioned earlier, that includes a transfer of 384,575 from prior year reserves. So that's that, that number, like you said, Rob, that you were mentioning earlier. And this also doesn't include some general fund grant revenues as well. So all of that is in your budget.
Okay, on the, can I ask a question? On pulling, on pulling from reserves, I just want to make sure I'm reading the, the first page of the budget correctly where we have the 21 actual. Am I correct that at the bottom where it says excess revenues, we're going to be $1,091,000 to the good over what was budgeted?
Nope.
That's over what?
That, that's over all funds. If you go to page two, it goes to the general fund. And based on our actuals as of December 31st, we're 714,792. But that's with a quarter left.
To the good.
But that's, that's over nine months, Bonnie.
Yeah, no, I got that. The only point I was going to make is if we do have to pull from reserves, we, we are showing a better-than-we-expected dollar number from, from this current fiscal year that will go on, on the, into the reserve pool. So it's, it's, so that was all I was trying to do is get the, the what's coming in versus the what may be going out when it comes to pulling from prior reserves that we're going to, that's going to be accretive.
I'm not sure I read it that way, Bonnie, because. Say again?
How do you read it?
I'm, I'm unmuted.
How do you read it, Rob?
How do you read it?
I read it that the number you just talked about is a nine-month number.
Yes, I agree.
So by the time we figure out what the actual excess in 2021 was that gets added to reserves, it'll be a much smaller number.
It could be, but it's unlikely to be less than $384,000.
I'm not sure.
Well, so remember that we will have, what you don't have included in terms of revenue for the December, you still have a lot of business licenses coming in. You still have a lot of gross receipts rental tax that has not yet been remitted. So yes, we, we have three months more of expenses, but we, we also do have some revenues that come in as part of that. So again.
I understand, we get that, I think. And Bonnie, I agree with your main point that we ought to be looking at how much we added to reserves last year before we moan about how much we're having to take out of reserves this year.
But we're, we're in violent agreement.
Yep.
Okay, um, the maintenance department, the total budget of $961,135 that represents a 12.36% increase. And, and that is largely attributed to an additional staff person. So the salary benefits and uniform costs.
And where will that person be assigned, Anne Marie?
That person would be assigned to, well, to Rick and would probably work under Penny focusing on the street maintenance.
Thank you.
The police department, $1,572,375. That's a total increase of 3.94%. That does reflect one additional officer, which is your, your salary benefits, uniform and equipment. Equipment being, you know, your gun, your shoes, your, you know, all of the things that, the gun belt, all the things that we need to outfit the officers. Of course, so you see an increase of 3.94%, but part of that is we budgeted $10,000 toward a police car in the departmental budget for the current fiscal year. And what we've done in this budget is we've moved the vehicle purchases to the transfer tax fund because they're a capital expense. So you can see on the slide where we've got the line number. So that ends up being $70,000, $20,000 city share where we use the $30,000 from the county and then $50,000 because they're requesting two vehicles.
Can I inquire a little bit more about that? So if you didn't shift the 70K to the transfer tax fund, would it be a greater than 3.94% increase?
Yes, it would. Do you have that number handy, Ellen Lorraine?
I can get it handy.
But yes, it definitely would be.
And then if you didn't?
An extra half percent.
Yes.
Say again, Andrew?
Probably an extra half percent. Right.
Well, when you add the 70, it makes the increase go from the 3.94 to 8.5.
And so it would be an 8.5% increase. What if you then didn't move lifeguards out of police with that?
That doesn't affect anything because the lifeguards have their own budget. They're, the lifeguards aren't budgeted in this portion.
Thanks. So it's a, an 8.5% increase roughly.
Right. And that's assuming a purchase of two vehicles.
And the, the city share, the 20,000, you, that's because you're counting 30,000 of the county's grant towards the police car, but it could be towards anything related to police, right?
Yes, I mean.
Half of it goes towards capital.
Right, there are some restrictions, but there, it can be used for a number of things.
Ellen Lorraine, did you say it has to be used for capital expenses for the police?
It used to be at least half of it has to be used towards capital.
Thank you.
Half can be used for operating.
Okay, so parking enforcement, this is, again, this is a big increase and that's largely because we're, we're making the supervisor year-round and adding two seasonal parking enforcement officers for Lewis Beach enforcement. So that's an, you know, it's a doubling of the budget.
Well, we need, in addition to the salaries for the folks dedicated to the Lewis Beach, are we going to need a vehicle for them or, because it's, it's a, that's, that's an, I mean, the downtown parking area is relative, metered area is relatively packed, but that's certainly not true for the beach.
Yeah, I think, I think in order to effectively patrol and enforce the parking on Lewis Beach, we would need to get a vehicle. You'll see in the later slide, that's not included in the budget. One of the, we are looking to get pricing for electric vehicles. You know, you see that BPW has a Chevy Bolt for meter reading and something small and electric like that would be actually probably very good for that. So we need to look at that. Enterprise, who we have our fleet leasing with, had not really been, I would say proactive about getting, getting the electric vehicle information out. The most recent stuff we have from them does not include the electric vehicle. So we have to dig a little harder for that.
Yeah, through the climate mayor's program that I'm involved with, they have a whole EV leasing program. Yeah, yeah. Through the climate mayor's program that I'm involved with, they have a whole EV uh, leasing program that we could look into.
And, and am I hearing you right that you're looking for the two seasonals on the Lewis Beach at a beach buggy?
Pardon me?
You're looking at a vehicle like a beach buggy?
No, I was thinking more like a Chevy Bolt, uh, uh, electric vehicle. It, it wouldn't go out onto the beach. It would be to. You know, do the, the street park, the on-street parking.
Okay.
And, and that's because if these folks are parking enforcement, they wouldn't have, their jurisdiction, just, it's an interesting question of their jurisdiction is limited to parking enforcement.
Right.
Okay.
But the, I didn't know whether this vehicle was for the seasonal officers for Lewis Beach or for the um. So you haven't budgeted for any increase, or we haven't gotten there yet, for the police, for the seasonal police?
Well, so we, okay, and, and we can get into, to more detail about this, but we did not, we were, and. We were kind of struggling to, to figure out if we had the parking enforcement. To deal with the parking and the, the Lewis Beach is really the issue where we're hearing that need for added enforcement. Our thought was that the visibility provided by the parking enforcement officers would likely cut down on some of the negative behavior. So we did not budget for um, seasonal police officers. But we do have, i- if it's something the council wants to add to the budget, we, we do have the, the cost number so we can, you know, provide that and, and add it in. Um, it's not in the base budget.
Thank you. Thanks.
Um, for Beach.
Anne Marie, just one, I, I, I'm sorry for interrupting. So you, you haven't budgeted for any seasonal police officers, just, just parking enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, for Beach Patrol, our lifeguards, um, the total budget we have at eighty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-five. That's a three-point-six-four percent increase. Their budget's been pretty flat over the years, but what we did this year is we have an addition of Motorola. Motorola radios so that they can communicate with each other. Um, Alicia's pretty strict about not letting the lifeguard have their phones with them because um. Sometimes when, when you put a teenager or young adult with a phone, they pay more attention to that than other things. So um, she does not allow them to take their, their phones out to the chair. So um, the, the Motorola radios um, would allow them to communicate. They have radios now, but they're really old and not in good shape.
So as the parent of two young adults, I, I assume, Anne Marie, that you could speak to that?
You know where I can speak to it. I um, managed, when I was in Dover, I um, the day camp program was under me. And the, i- it was a constant with the camp counselors. You know, that the parents would come in to pick up their kids and the counselors are just sitting there on their phones and like, nah, so.
I think, I knew a guy who managed the jungle gyms lifeguards at one point, and I think they had a similar rule, just eyes on the water, not on the phone.
Right.
Right.
So, um, the city manager's office, total budget, three hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars. That's a decrease of seven-point-eight-eight percent. Um, part of this is because we have budgeted for the local government management fellow and that person would not start until July. This um, fellow would be shared with Milford again, so it would not be like we had last year where it was one hundred percent with the city. So um, the costs at this point are not reflected. Um, what we did initially with Christine was she. We bore the costs and then we billed them. So we then budgeted for the revenue. We, at this point, have not budgeted that revenue yet. Am I correct, Ollie?
We have not budgeted that half portion.
Yeah, my, my sense is that the management fellow, our, our first um. Our first management fellow, because we've only had one, was uh, more than, more than worth the money we spent on her.
Yeah, I mean.
Tremendously helpful.
There are some projects that just wouldn't have been able to move forward, like updating job descriptions, getting that handbook up to date. Um, our evaluation program, you know, they're pretty important. And then a, as we've talked about. You know, kind of next on the list are the financial policies, developing the multi-year capital budget. Um, so you know, pretty important tasks that, that, you know, you just don't have the bandwidth in the normal staff to do. Um, finance department, again, this is a decrease, so a, a budget of four hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars, a decrease of four-point-twenty-four percent. And we did include a part-time employee in the finance department to, to scan um, for our electronic filing system. We.
Couple of questions, Anne Marie. Um, why the decrease?
Um, the, the primary reason for the decrease, what, oh gosh, why, what was that?
It was health insurance coverage.
Yeah, we have, one, one of our employees is not um, is, is not using our health insurance. So.
Okay. And second question, uh, what will be the priority for the scanning employee? I think it's a great thing to do, but I don't know what, what they're, they're gonna be asked to scan for.
So um, one of the things that when we get to the operating budget, we can um. What we'll touch on is that we did budget for um. A property records file cabinet, which we don't have right now. Right now, we can do, you know, minutes, general correspondence, um, you know, contracts. Stuff like that, but anything that is tied to a property does not go in there. So we have budgeted for a um. A, a property file cabinet. And now that we've got council minutes, you know. Pretty far back, I think into the, the nineties, um, I think our first priority would be getting that, some of the property stuff in because. Those are things that we tend to need to draw on pretty frequently.
That would be great. When you say file cabinet, that's an electronic, a, a digital file cabinet.
Right, virtual. Yep. Um, the Parks and Marina Administrator and the Marina, um, a, a budget of sixty-four thousand four hundred five dollars, a decrease of. Twelve, just over twelve and a half percent. A little like me, forgetting why the decrease. So Ellen, we might remember that. Um, for the Marina, it's an increase of thirty-two-point-ninety percent. So a total budget of um, one-twenty-eight-seven-seventy-two. Um, and that's really driven by two things, the dredging. Um, we, based on the current contract, we've increased that to forty thousand a year instead of thirty-five. And um, with the, the dock master and the assistant dock master. Um, when we hired last summer, um, when we looked at comparable positions and frankly, where we needed to, to be to get. A qualified person, it did bring the staffing costs up a little.
So the section in Parks and Marina is, last year, we had budgeted for someone to do the watering. But the watering was taken over by a maintenance employee.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I remember that now.
So that would actually be a decrease offsetting?
Yeah, so that's in the Parks and Marina, the one above it.
Okay.
Decrease of twelve-point-five-eight is because.
Got it, thanks.
Forgot that we had done that, okay. Okay, the Parks and Recreation Commission, um, three hundred six thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. This is a decrease of four-point-eight-seven percent. Um, part of that is because we, we moved the capital projects out. Now, I think that the tennis courts, we had moved out last year. Um, into the transfer tax fund, but we, in, in the um, twenty-twenty-one budget, we had the George H.P. Smith. Playground Phase Two, which would, which is. For a number of reasons, not gonna get completed this fiscal year. So that is being moved forward, but it's being moved to the transfer tax fund again because it's capital.
And how many is that?
Pardon me? How much?
Yeah, roughly.
Um, it is like thirty-six and change.
Thanks.
Um, the, and, and the tennis courts, again, they were already in the transfer tax. Um, fund, but there, that was budgeted at seventy-three thousand five hundred. Some of that will be incurred this year and, and, but. The bulk of the construction would happen in the new fiscal year. Um, Lewis and Bloom, in last year, the original budget had a, a donation of ten thousand dollars. Um, they, this coming fiscal year requested eight thousand dollars. Again, you'll recall that they had requested ten thousand dollars, but then they came back. Um, you know, around the time of the budget amendment and said that they did not need a city donation this year. So. So while it was in the budget, it was not, um, we, we did not give them ten thousand dollars this year. They're asking for eight thousand for next year.
But Anne, Anne Marie, remind me, didn't we, didn't they? Didn't we reduce the donation last year at their request because the watering on Second Street got, would, they, they no longer provided that service?
Right, the watering on Second Street and, and in other locations as well.
And didn't that take it from ten to eight, or am I just misremembering?
No, that took it from twelve to ten.
Twelve to ten, okay, thank you.
It was either twelve to ten or fourteen to ten.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then we are um, going into the, the first extension of our lawn maintenance contract. So that's a, a five percent increase. Um, and, and that's a total of five thousand three hundred thirty dollars. There's an increase in the tree budget and um. There's a lot of, of stuff that, that relates to that. Um, some of it is, there's um, some things that are reimbursable by grant. Um, some of it is um, the, the pruning that we have to do to the street trees so that the, so that they're not scraping the trash trucks. Um, and, and some of it is that the, the cost for cleanup from storm damage has gone up. So I'm sure. Um, when we get into the commission's budget, um, Janet and Marty can speak to that, but um. What, what we have done is we um, are, are looking at other vendors for some of the things where the prices have, have kind of. Gone up more than we thought they should and, and, you know, so, so we have started looking at other vendors as well, but there is definitely. Because of the maintenance responsibilities that come with the urban canopy, um, it, it's just caused an increase.
Yeah, I just also bring up, we still, I think, have unspent ten thousand dollars. Um, saved from uh, when, when Mariners Retreat went in. Um, I think we've never identified what to do with that ten thousand dollars. Um, but it's just, it, and I, I don't think it should go into the operating budget. Um, it, because it should be for a, you know, a, um, for trees themselves, but I just, I just would, would remind people that that money is out there.
Right, so um, and, and again, I think it's something that Janet and Marty can talk. In more detail about when we get to, to, you know, the detailed discussion about that budget. But I know that, that they are working on um, a, a plan for some street trees um, in the Fourth Street corridor. Which um, they believe would be the appropriate use for that because it's in the same vicinity. Um, and the building officials' office, the total budget um, is three hundred forty-five thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. That's an increase of just over nine percent. When we added an additional assistant building official for FY twenty-twenty-one, we budgeted nine months. So a lot of that really has to do with taking the nine months and, and annualizing it. Um, and we budgeted for purchase of the ICC codebooks for twenty eighteen. If, if council does decide to, to go to um. The, the twenty-twenty-one codes, obviously, that same budgeted amount would buy, I mean, it, it's, the books aren't going to be markedly different in price, so.
Anne Marie, does that include the two books that Robin referred to yesterday, the twenty-twelve to twenty-fifteen and twenty-fifteen to twenty-eighteen reconciliations?
Yes, yeah.
And then you'd have to buy, and then if you went to twenty-one, you'd have to buy the third reconciliation, which would be eighteen to twenty-one.
Right, and I, but I think he said those books are like twenty-five dollars. So those.
Right.
It, it's, the codebooks themselves are very expensive.
Okay, I didn't, okay.
And the other thing with the, the codebooks, and, and I guess when we, when we talk about this, um, perhaps at the council meeting. Um, you know, a, as we determine if we're gonna look at twenty eighteen or twenty-twenty-one. Um, one of the things that ICC does is they publish a code with commentary. And that has a lot of the interpretations. One of the things that ICC does for their members is. If you're trying to interpret a provision of the code, they um, they will do that. And then. After they've done a series of them, they will publish the code with commentary so that. Some of the things that are in the areas of gray, you, you know, you can get the answers without going to them.
Is that included in the cost you've budgeted, the commentary?
I believe so. Um, Robin, I know Robin's here.
Yeah.
Anne Marie, while, while he's getting on, um, Randy Burton mentioned the concept of budgeting some money for um.
Training.
Training. I, I, I think that's a, I thought that was a pretty good idea and could be money well-spent, uh, if we are truly concerned about our. Builders being well-versed on the code and applying it and, and. Building a relationship there too with our builders. I think it could be a, you know, I thought it was a good idea.
Right.
I don't know what that would, something like that would cost or. Where it would go.
So I guess two questions now for you, Robin. Does the, the budget number you gave us for books, does that in, include buying the commentary?
Yes, yes, it did.
Okay.
But it, but it, again, if, if we're going to start looking to do the upgrade. Those um, little books that were discussed. Last evening, we're gonna have to be, unless we wait till April first to purchase them, have to purchase now. The twenty-two-dollar, twenty-five-dollar ones.
Okay, yeah, you can purchase those whenever. I mean.
Yeah.
Those need to go.
Yeah, correct.
And.
You're gonna need those regardless.
Anne Marie, while, while Robin's on the line, um, let me see if I can understand a, a question. We, we license this. It's not sitting in somebody's office. It's available online. But who's, who's licensed to access?
Robin, do you want it?
The, the, the ICC has copyright rules on their, on their books, so they. They really are not online anywhere. You have to purchase the book. So we have, we have a membership through the ICC that uh, the city does.
And that entitles us to one hard copy?
It, it entitles you to purchase them at, at each discounted rate.
Okay, and then, and you've got that copy presumably, of the twenty-twelve anyway, sitting in your office?
Yes, we have two copies. Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, and so if, if somebody wants to understand the code, they just make an appointment with you to take a look at the book?
They can look at them, yeah. There, there are places that you can Google online that you might be able to find sections of the code. But normally the ICC, they're pretty tight with their codebooks.
Got it, thank you. That was what I was asking.
Any other questions for Robin?
Uh, I have a real quick question. Uh. Was there, during last night's meeting, was there some suggestion that in order to get the licensing? I'm talking about for the tradespeople, for the builders. Is there actually coursework that they are expected to take? Uh, you know, what kind of training? Is, is required for them to become licensed?
A- again, there, there's, there's no actual requirement to take any classes. Someone could just sign up. For the, to take the test if you, if you felt comfortable enough to go ahead and, and read the codebook on your own. And, and, and get your certification. If you pass the test, then you get your certification in that area that you're uh, that you, you tested on.
Okay, all right. So there would, okay, so the training, the, the idea, I, so that, does that kind of qualify what Randy Burton had suggested at last night's meeting?
I, I think somewhat, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Still on training, Anne Marie, I, I, excuse me if you, if you answer this. But Andrew's suggestion, which I agree with, that we should budget for training our people, is that included in the, in your graph budget?
By, by our people, do you mean? By by our people, do you mean our employees?
Yeah, I mean, Robin, to get trained in.
Yes.
That's all there.
Um.
And is there a cost for testing?
Yes, there is. Um, and and there's a a cost, yeah, so all of our our staff does maintain certifications, and there's a a cost for renewal of the the certifications as well. That is all budgeted, I I just want to look and tell you exactly how much we budgeted for training. Um, it was based on the requests, so. It looks like we budgeted um a thousand dollars for training and fifteen hundred twenty for dues and subscriptions.
Did would that cover training in the new code, whichever we adopt, twenty eighteen or twenty twenty one?
It would, um, so it would, it it would cover training that typically they go to, um, they typically go to the training that's provided by the um Delaware Building Officials Association or the Southern Delaware Building Officials Association. Um, they also do some online training. A thousand dollars if they wanted to to travel somewhere to go to like a multi-day training, that would not cover that, Robin. Any any more detail on that?
Yeah, and who knows what's going to happen on how much of this training might be online going forward?
I mean, things things, it looks like at this point, even into the summer, are still being planned virtually.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the planning and community development, that's the the planner's office. Um, a total budget of a hundred thirty five thousand fifty dollars, a decrease of just over twenty percent. And that is largely um decreasing consulting services. We, you'll recall, budget um for Tom West's services. And we have had fewer projects where we've needed to bring Tom in. Um, so we budgeted um twenty five thousand dollars in consulting, um, but that's less than we budgeted last year. Okay, other budgets, um, we have several budgets where there were no changes. Um, the the mayor and city council, um, I I'm sorry, I put historic preservation commission, it should be H Park. Um, Historic Lewis Byways Committee, um, we kept the contribution in for them. Um, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Assessment and Board of Adjustment, the the budgets are um what they were in the current fiscal year. The Planning Commission, we did increase to provide um for the um clerical support. Um, so that was a thousand dollar increase, so that's a total of forty five hundred dollars for that budget.
And the clerical support is minute taking or?
Right, that's Jackie doing the minute. Um, one thing that we do not have from the planning commission is I know some of the things they've talked about in their action plan um may require consulting services, but they have not um provided a budget request at this point. I know that um, I think, I believe Janelle reached out to them and let them know which day we're going to be talking about the boards and commissions so that perhaps um Drew or or representative of the commission can attend um to to possibly talk about what they might be looking to do. And Janelle just confirmed that she could do that. Um, so the public art committee, um, they they have um requested it their request is a a forty five percent increase over last year. Trying to get to that page. Page sixteen. Um. So they've requested a total of twelve thousand seven hundred fifty, so it's an increase of four thousand. Um, the mitigation planning
Well, stop a second, I I assume that that where we have these changes from the various committees, commissions and boards, um, they're they're going to come and and talk to us about why?
Yeah.
Yes, and I can tell you what which day that is, let me, look, I have the agendas here. Um. The boards and commissions will be here to talk to you on um February twenty sixth.
Okay, thank you.
The mitigation
Excuse me, Anne Marie, excuse me, what did you say? I couldn't quite hear you, what, commissions?
The um, any, any of the board mission or committee budgets are currently on the schedule would be talked about at the February twenty sixth budget meeting.
Thank you, appreciate that.
The mitigation planning team, um, we decreased the budget by twenty thousand, thirty six percent. Um, again, the the big ticket item in this budget is the FragMities management. And um Chatham and the maintenance department have worked closely together on um how we do some of the the cutting that needs to be done as part of the FragMities management, so we were able to bring um the the cost estimate for that down. We still haven't gotten through the full um cycle of the the FragMities management. We haven't gotten all the way to the burn because the burn was scheduled, it was supposed to be last April, then COVID hit. Um, then it was rescheduled with the Division of Forestry for the fall. And a- again, that um, I think it was that the number started spiking again, so it got canceled. So um, we're still waiting to get to that phase, hopefully we do get to the the controlled burn phase in the coming year.
That and depending upon whether or not Chatham is still with us, this would uh make a difference perhaps in this budget.
Right.
You know, whether we can count on his services.
I mean, so it it, I mean, we do expect Chatham back in April, so.
Right. But whether or not he can take on the same given, you know, his recovery, so.
Um, the African American Heritage Commission, you'll recall, um, did not have a budget in the current fiscal year, so this is a new budget. They put together a budget request that um comes to eighteen thousand dollars. Um, it's primarily events and outreach. Um, you, um, I'm sure that that the leadership of that committee can can provide the details. And I I can um also distribute to you the breakdown that was provided to me as well. Um, the election, we in increased the budget by seven hundred fifty five dollars, which is just over fifty percent. This is based somewhat on the twenty twenty expenses, we didn't bring it quite to the twenty twenty expense level. Um. Some of the things that some of the major costs associated with the election weren't actually in the election budget, um, such as the the mailing. Um, but we do believe that with the um, you know, the absentee ballots and and stuff that there there the expenses will still be more than than they had been budgeted in the past. And you'll recall that before before twenty twenty, our last election had been two thousand fourteen. So the money that was in the budget was based on things that were a number of years old.
And on your your point about the costs being there being other costs, didn't, I thought that Christine spent many days on the election rolls.
Oh, yeah, and that did, that was not, you know, that that was not a cost that went to that budget because
Right.
It was an already budgeted expense.
So there really are some some major expenses that
Right.
Could be allocated to that.
And um both of them spent, because everything we did um with sending out and accepting absentee ballots, we had two people involved, so everything was, you know, looked at and then confirmed so that by the time the the Board of Elections got it, it had already been confirmed. So, you know, theirs was like the one last check.
Anne Marie, uh, was there any uh uh grant money available from the state to help offset those costs?
There was not, um, I don't know, Ellen Lorraine, we didn't submit any of the election expenses under the CARES Act, did we?
No, we did not.
And was that, that was a a management choice, or was that because that wasn't a revenue stream that was worth exploring?
So, you know, our our thought was that it was those expenses that were directly related to COVID that that we submitted, so, you know, for instance, the the police emergency pay, the enhanced restroom cleaning, the um purchase of laptops to to set up our staff to work remotely. Um, I know I'm not, what else? I mean, it was really those things that were directly related to the pandemic, so we did not, um, you know, we we would have had to, i- if we wanted to, say, submit postage for um absentee ballots, we have to, one, track that postage meter it separately and also be able to justify that all of that would have been, would not have happened without COVID. So that trying to make sure you attribute it to COVID, I I think we, it becomes more difficult on something like that.
So.
Thank you, thank you.
Two two questions, um, the first one is, are we anticipating an an on-cycle election?
Yeah.
Okay, second, um, we we uh voted to go, I I can't remember if it was a charter amendment or ordinance amendment, but we voted to go with the state uh roles. Was that a charter or an ordinance, Rob, do you?
Yeah, that was, we voted to adopt a charter allowing us to do that, but we haven't moved towards doing it.
All right, so so that'll be a charter amendment, which probably won't happen until after the election anyway.
Exactly.
Okay, I was just double checking, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, we're starting to to gear up, um, you know, knowing that the we, people can start filing in March. So, you know, we we are um gearing up for for that, Janine and I met last week and we'll meet again, I'm sure, next week to to kind of make sure we're we're ready for what's coming. Um, and that we do, and and the other thing is making sure that we have a plan for the outreach. Um, you know, we did email blasts, we did um ads, you know, we'll reach out. Nick, I think it's on Nick, you'll be hearing from us because, again, we want to make sure we get the word out about the election. Need to register separately, all of those wonderful things. Um. The operating budget, so this is kind of the non-department specific, everything else budget. So this is um one million four hundred seventy two thousand dollars. Um, and it is on pages nineteen and twenty eight, or I'm sorry, nineteen and twenty. Um, and we do have, you know, on page twenty where there's a little bit of breakout on some of those things, um mainly just the the furniture and the um hardware needs. Um, you know, so we have a o- an overall decrease of of three point two percent. You know, some of them are are, you know, things like bank charges that fluctuate. We had an increase, we with a number of staff working remotely. Um, we did deploy more cell phones. And as you know, you can't just get a cellphone and say, I'm going to use it for a couple of months. So we we have more staff now with um city cell phones, um, because we had such a long stretch where we were out of the office. Um, we did increase um trash removal just because of that, that's how it was trending. We had an increase in some of our insurance lines, um, our engineering consulting. Um, we're we're finding that there's been more um reliance on on GMV for some general engineering support that does not get assigned to a project. Um, or by a project, I mean a capital project, um, so that ends up hitting that budget. Um. Software support is one that I I do want to mention a little bit more. Um, I I mentioned before the the electronic virtual filing cabinet. So we have the current file cabinet maintenance fees and then the setup for the new file cabinet. Um, we are also looking at going to a cloud-based admins rather than hosting it on our own server.
Right, cloud-based, cloud-based what?
Admins, which is kind of our, i- it's our accounting, it's our everything software, it's where we do our permits, our licenses. Um, and we're also looking to add the work order module and what's called resident self-service. And this we started looking into based on um just some some comments I've heard both individually from a number of you. Um, and um, it's been mentioned at meetings as well, just if 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 one of our constituents has a complaint, a question, you know, there's a potful at this intersection. Um, oh gosh, there's a a street sign down, you know, um, overgrowth at this location, you know, whatever it is, whatever issue they would have that they wanted to bring to the city government, it would allow them to, one, take a picture and submit it um through an online app. Um, it that would then send it into our work order system and distribute it to the appropriate department. And it would allow us at the the senior management level or even at at the departmental management level, once they've distributed something through the work order system, to get a, you know, a report of the outstanding work orders and you can see where things are. It also allows the the constituent to go in and say, um, you know, what's the status of of my issue? And, you know, a- as the staff, we should be populating it with that. So it it provides just a better way for people to get us their issues, for us to follow up and for them to have the ability to to find out on the status of things. We are working, we we looked at two companies, um, but we we had a demo recently with admins. And one of the good things with using admins, because they're our accounting system, is things like if you have a bulk trash pickup or you need a new trash cart, you could go in, make the request in that system, do your your payment in the system, and then it gets put into the work order system. So um, we find, I I think that it it provides a way for us to provide, I think, much stronger and um transparent service to the constituents. So um, you know, we can certainly provide more information as we get into this. The other thing that we included that we have started using but don't have a real good, um, you know, we're just at the beginning, is what's called host compliance, which monitors the online short-term rental platforms to try to find um unlicensed short-term rentals. And then it, they also have um a function that if, you know, somebody remits their gross receipts rental tax and it just doesn't, it it looks low, they're, they have a function of auditing that based on, you know, the algorithms they've developed and all this stuff. So we haven't, we've only just started um getting from them what the the unlicensed rentals are. So we're still kind of figuring out, um, but but the idea is obviously that you make more money in the revenue than you pay in the software by picking up what's not licensed.
Based on these preliminary, um, the preliminary work by this company, are you finding that this is is a a fruitful uh decision to to go and try to find these uh these unlicensed or underpaying um owners?
Um, I I gotta say, we're not far enough in.
Okay.
Would you agree, Ellen Lorraine, I mean, we just had like a kickoff with them um the week before Christmas? Or I think it might have been even been the week of Christmas, and it it's, we're we're still learning, so.
Anne Marie, what is the name of that provider, that certain service provider?
Host Compliance.
Host Compliance, thank you.
Isn't that a polite name?
Yeah, it sure is.
Thank you.
Anne Marie, are are things like business licenses and um payment of gross rental fees, is all that automated already? Can people go on and take care of those things through a city site?
Yes, right.
They can go on and our website currently and pay for the G R R T. Um, they can renew their business license online. Uh, we're looking at adding a feature for our website that would make it more user-friendly. And um then it would get posted into our
for our website that would make it more user-friendly and, um, then it would get posted into our system.
Thank you.
Um, you know, and then we, we've got some decreases in, in a variety of line. Technical equipment is, and that the line where we have a decrease there, that's capital outlay. And that's where we tend to, to budget things like furniture. Um, and, and we had a, a number of furniture purchases this year, um, that are actually still underway. Yeah, so we, we did have a decrease in that, um, just due to need.
Anne Marie, that category, did you anticipate, um, upgrading the, the A V A stuff at the Rollins Center for, so we could hold city council meetings?
Well, so we, we did the, we did account for adding, um, the, the street, the camera and stuff so that we can stream meetings.
You did, okay. Alright, thank you.
And then we have municipal street aid, so.
Anne Marie, I'm sorry, the, the telephones piece, is that a, a function of more units? Or is it just a, an increase in the service fees or what?
Telephones, that was, it was mainly cellular because.
The number of phones that were giving, giving out to the.
We had very few, if any, staff that had, I mean, it was really just the parking enforcement that had city-issued phones. But, you know, when we had a number of, you know, a number of staff working remotely, we deployed, um, cell phones and we would have city lines transferred to those cell phones. Um, and, and some of the positions, frankly, are, are positions where it makes sense for them to have a city cellphone because they spend a lot of time in the field. So for, for instance, for, for Rick Melendez and, and Robin Davis.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was a function of just like AT&T or Verizon jacking up the price or whether it was just more units. Yeah, okay.
Also, we had to add more, we may have to add more cellphone usage, uh, depending upon what happens with increased number of parking people.
Right.
Yeah, because, uh, they, in order to write tickets, they, they need a cellphone.
No, they don't.
Don't they now? On their handheld.
They have their handheld device.
Alright, but so that'd be, okay.
So, um, so the municipal street aid and the governor's budget, he recommended six million, which was the funding level of last year. So we would anticipate the revenue being, um, mu- much the same, which was, I think, one hundred sixteen thousand, is that right? Um, yeah, one hundred sixteen thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Um, again, this is a fund where, um, we do have some prior year reserves that, that we decided it's probably not best to hold on to. So, um, we budgeted ten thousand dollars for sidewalk and crosswalk repairs. And that's usually if we have, um, precision concrete come out and, and kind of shave the, the uneven areas, that, that's how we pay for that. Um, the, the leaf vacuum is, well, it, it's on its last leg. Um, and since the, the vacuuming of, of leaves is part of maintaining our streets, um, we've put that in there. And then we have a street sweeper lease, um, payment that we make out of that for thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, so.
Before you jump, don't move on, may I ask a question please about the sidewalk repairs?
Yep.
Um, help me understand this, please. Are the sidewalks not privately owned?
Sidewalks are, so the, the sidewalks are in the right of way.
Correct.
Wrong to the city, but the, the adjacent property owner is responsible for the, the cost of, of the maintenance. So.
Okay.
Were to say replace a sidewalk, we would bill that back to the owner. The, the work that we have Precision do is really in kind of the high pedestrian traffic areas to remove trip hazards. So we, we do that under our municipal street aid maintenance budget. We do not charge that to the property owner.
And Anne Marie, uh, why would the leaf vacuum not be a capital item?
Well, it, it is. Um, it is, and you can use municipal street aid for capital items, um, as long as they're related to your street maintenance. So that's why we put it in this.
So it's in the operating budget, but it's.
This isn't operating, this is municipal street aid. So this is.
Same money.
Get from the state.
Well, we're spending the money out of our capital budget or out of our, um, operating budget to buy the, the vacuum.
Municipal street aid, which is its own fund. So it is, it can be, it's.
We don't need to, we don't need to differentiate from that account.
Because it's all.
Got it, okay.
For operations or maintenance as it relates to street.
Even though that's a grant, we don't treat it like other grants with offensively.
No, because Delta can, can come back and audit how we spend it. Um, I mean, as they can with any grant, but it, you know, the fact that we keep it all in one fund, it, it's very transparent and very easy to see exactly how we spend that money.
Thanks.
And, and this, this being my last budget go-round, I just want to say, since I say it every time, I'm very glad we're spending this money instead of hanging on to it. So I applaud, uh, I, I applaud the expenditures for things that we need, obviously. I mean, not, nice to have, must haves, but I, I'm glad that, I'm glad it's being, it's being, um, put to work.
Well, and i- if you listen to the, um, BPW ten-year capital project meeting that they had a few weeks ago, they talked about MS four and budgeting for MS four. Leaf vacuum and the collection of leaves ends up being one of the things that the city and the board can report on as part of our MS four compliance. So, I mean, it, it definitely corresponds with the street maintenance.
So Anne Marie, I, I noticed in this.
I'd like to see it correct.
Go ahead, Tim.
No, please, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just, I was just pointing out, so the maintenance costs under the maintenance department then seem to go down by twenty-eight percent. Is that then correlated to the fact that they are getting this new piece of equipment? Or are there other reasons that vehicle ma- maintenance vehicle cost is going down there? I'm, I'm talking about.
What page?
Uh, page six, five hundred.
Twenty-two?
Five, two, five, zero.
So that is where we, if we need to send a vehicle out to get serviced, that is the line that the expenditure would hit. Um, if we do serve in-house, uh, that would be line one hundred, five hundred, fifty-three, sixty. Which it went from twenty-one to seventy-five hundred and proposed twenty-two with ten thousand.
So I guess I, I'm just looking for the reason why, why it would go down this year. Is it just, we anticipate doing more of it in-house?
We do.
Alright.
Um, the, the general capital project fund and, and one thing we would ask you to think about, and we don't expect or need answers today. But the general capital project fund does not have a sustaining revenue source. So, um, if you look at page twenty-four of your budget, you'll see, um, our, our, um, revenues there. You have, um, investment income. You've got that, the, we put the natural gas franchise in there. Um, this is the, the big ones, prior year reserve.
Right.
And, and then we have a transfer that we make from the general fund for the street sweeper, or no, not for, what are we, what do we transfer for? Trash truck?
Yeah.
Trash truck, sorry. Um, so, um, this is not a, a, a fund that has a sustaining, um, income stream. So as we, you know, think about the long term, that is one of the things we've been trying to think about. How do we, how, how do we get revenue into this fund? Um, so that said, we've got right now three trash truck leases that are paid for out of that. Um, I figured you would notice that one is way more than the others and the reason is that's the automated truck. Um, so that, that, the, the equipment itself costs more, but you don't need, you can operate it with one person instead of three. So, um, it makes a difference. And then we have the, the fleet leasing comes out of that. So, again, just, um, this is a fund where we do typically draw from the reserves and we don't have a steady stream of income. So again, don't think we're going to solve it today. We may not even solve it in this budget cycle. But it's something that, you know, as we think about building the multi-year capital plan, um, we should really think about how, how do we look at sustaining a revenue source into this fund?
Well, that also holds true with the leasing of vehicles, period.
Right, right.
So I mean, your, your, your lease with enterprise is not funded that way either.
Is not funded what?
You know, doesn't have, doesn't have money pouring into it.
Right, exactly.
Well, one thing we might want to think about, and this is kind of a, a riff on, um, on Rob's idea from a couple of years back, uh, to have the, um, the windfall fund. I mean, maybe what we should do is come up with some kind of policy. And it doesn't have to be done in this budget cycle, but just something to think about where, you know, if transfer tax funds exceed X percent of what was anticipated or, you know, some measure like that, those would automatically go over to the general capital fund. In other words, so that there's, i- i- it's not, it's not a, you know, it's, it's not an absolutely secure recurring uh, source of replenishment for this fund, but at least it's a, it's something that we can look at and monitor um, as the year goes on. So just, just a thought on that. I mean, that's all, we, we, the reason we pulled the.
I can't hear what Bonnie's saying.
You're probably lucky. Can, can you hear me now?
So we just lost him.
Did he freeze?
He's gone, he's back.
I could hear you well, Bonnie. Yeah, same, Bonnie.
Could you all hear what she said?
Yeah, I think you froze.
Hello?
Yep, we heard you.
No, he's frozen again.
Yeah. Frozen.
Well, I, obviously it was me talking that caused it, so I'm going to stop. There, see?
You're moving again, Tim, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, but I missed everything that Bonnie said. It just disappeared, the scene.
Yeah, your, your screen froze and then it went black. Uh, so.
Uh, here, I, i- you're, you're giving me an opportunity more, to be more succinct, Tim, which is.
Thank you.
My suggestion was, one thing to think about, um, is we pulled the transfer tax part of the budget out of the operating budget because we wanted to dedicate it more to capital projects. Uh, so one thing we might want to think about in the future, and it doesn't have to be in this budget cycle discussion, but as a policy, is, this is an Ellen Lorraine question because she can do the numbers, but is, if, if incoming transfer taxes exceed whatever the expectation is, which they have been doing year over year for as long as I've been on council, um, then some percentage of that automatically kicks over in general, into general capital. Uh, so we at least have something earmarked.
I see what you're saying.
It may fluctuate, but at least it's a dedicated source of funding to Marie's point. It's just an idea.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know what occurred to interrupt that service there.
Now, what you may want to consider with that fund is, we currently collect a one and a half percent building tax. And that money could be earmarked. Over to the, uh, general capital fund. So as of the end of December, we had collected almost eighty-six thousand in building tax monies. And if we look at our proposed budget, we're proposing dipping into reserves eighty thousand two hundred and sixty dollars in FY twenty-two.
Uh, Eleanor, what is the building tax? By the building tax, what is that exactly?
If you go to the transfer tax page, the proposed budget.
What page, please?
Twenty-five, or I'm sorry, twenty-six.
Yeah, it's twenty-six. And that time is four sixty, four zero four, zero 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 zero. And so if a property owner builds on a vacant lot that they've purchased within a year, there's a one and a half percent building tax that they.
I always assumed that was, uh, just accounted for as a transfer tax, but it's.
Keep the two together. We've been booking them or recounting for them together. But that particular line could be switched to go to the general capital, um, fill a capital fund. Yep. That, that's a very good idea, Eleanor, actually. Of course, that, that may not always be there, but that could easily change.
Is it presupposed a, an empty lot, you said, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But technically.
You don't have many of those.
This is where it gets tricky. And Robin, you might want to unmute his. The, under the code, if, if you do a substantial addition within a year, so say you buy a house, say you buy a lot with an old house on it and you scrape the lot, that's a new house. Or you do a major addition or a, a total gut and rehab. Um, what we're finding is that's a harder one to nail down how to collect, but the, the code does allow for that. So, um, if, if we.
Anne Marie, explain yourself. What do you? Why is that harder to collect?
It's harder.
Is that a, is that a too subjective, uh, a decision, in other words, for you all?
Um.
You're looking for guidance from us?
I'm, I'm trying to think of the discussions we've had. I think it has to do with, what's that, what's the threshold? You have somebody do it, you know, and, and, um, and how do you, how do you hold to that threshold?
So is that a discussion that you would look to council to help shape a policy? Or is this something that you all staff will take care of?
So we have started having the discussion. Um, it's probably something that we can set, you know, the, the policy administratively. Um, but it's possible we may need to come to you all.
I think you ought to deal with it administratively and then see where we are. Bring it back to us if you need.
Yeah.
Anne Marie, is this something you would track with building permits?
Yes.
And, but, and so if the renovation, if, if some contractor working on the renovation doesn't need a building permit, you wouldn't capture that as part of the fifty percent?
But, but chances of, of working on something that doesn't require a building permit, but yet would fall in what the, the law intends for you to, to pay the tax for, I think is unlikely.
Well, repaint, a painting contractor.
Pardon me?
A painting contractor.
Right.
They don't need building.
And, you know.
Or a new carpet, that kind of thing.
Right, and another consideration would be to sunset the annexation fees because the, the addition of things like trash trucks are really necessary for, um, potential new developments.
Yep, yep. Good point.
Yeah, so the, the resolution, we could pull that, the resolution, I think, set it at, at twenty twenty-five, but I could be wrong. I'll, I'll find that. But a- again, council can undo anything council has done, so.
Was, was that a county thing or was that a city decision for, to implement this tax?
The, oh, the tax?
Yeah, the building tax.
Building tax is in state law.
That is a state thing. And it, d- does that have a sunset clause in it?
No.
Hmm, okay.
Appreciate you raising that, though. It'd, it'd be useful to understand other line items, as Ted pointed out, that don't have, you know, revenue streams attached to them that we could look to, it's attached revenue streams to rather than rely on kind of windvalls and, and such.
Exactly.
Yeah, for budgeting purposes, yeah. It would be helpful.
So the next slide, and if you're on page twenty-six, this is where the news is good.
Oh, good. Lean in, everyone.
We get to all that needs to be done, right? Um, so our, we had budgeted for the current fiscal year. We had budgeted one point six million dollars for transfer tax. Um, just to, to give you a perspective for, uh, the last fiscal year, fiscal twenty twenty, we had budgeted. we had budgeted one point three million dollars for transfer tax. Um, the twenty twenty actual was one point seven, seven million. And a- again, I, I mentioned that we had budgeted one point six million. This is one of the few line items that when we did the budget amendment, that we amended it up, we upped it to one point six seven five million. And we're currently at one million, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
You still have three months to go.
Let's see, two hundred seven thousand.
Oh, right, for the over three million. So, still trying to be conservative, we budgeted one million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, so the great thing about transfer tax is when, when the real estate market is booming, it just flies in. The bad thing is, when the, when the market takes a downturn, it dries up almost immediately.
Yeah, it's a crack habit.
What's that?
It's a crack habit.
Exactly. Which is the reason that we moved it.
Well, I, I don't know if it's a crack habit. I, I think it's a, I think it's a binge and, binge and, uh.
All right, all right. She's your poison.
But, but, crack, that's a little strong.
I don't think we want to, I don't think we want Nick to report this as a crack habit.
Oh.
Let's delete that from the record, please, rec, Nick.
So two years ago, we moved the transfer tax out of the general fund. We, we previously, the transfer tax is one and a half percent of each real estate sale that we get, and then the state gets their share. We had previously had one half percent that went into a capital. It was called the half percent fund, went into a capital fund, and one percent stayed in the general fund. But the other thing we paid for out of the general fund was the debt service, which is really capital. So what we did is we moved the entire transfer tax and the debt service into its own fund. So the transfer tax is now a standalone fund, and the debt service is, um, hold on, I cut. Oh, Lorraine, I can't find my handout. Um, the, so for this current fiscal year that's coming up, it'll be eight hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. Now, as of the end of March twenty twenty-five, we're done. So we have, um, we, we have, you know, four more years of this. That expense is in the transfer tax fund, and then we, we have been putting the bulk of our capital project in there. So what we have in here now is finishing the phase twenty-four work. Phase twenty-four is the Coleman Avenue, Fourth Street, and then the, the, we did the, the crosswalks and ADA ramps. So that's the first two lines there.
Can I, can I interrupt you for just one second before that, that eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar number of that, you know, of average? Another thing council might want to think about is saying, when we no longer have this debt service to pay, which is, you know, coming on towards a million dollars a year, that goes into general capital. Because you're gonna have, you're gonna have money. It's, it's still all coming out of the transfer tax fund, but that is mon, that is, that is a annual, a hefty annual payment that will end, because we will pay it off the bond holders. So you might want to take that, um, that revenue and say, okay, we're not going to throw this into the operating fund anywhere. We're going to take it over to capital. And then you've got a pretty healthy chunk going in every year.
Right.
So, and, and when we set up the transfer tax fund, it, and one of the things is there, uh, under the state law that creates the transfer tax, there are certain things we can use it for. So we can't use it for general operating. However, you can use it for public safety. So as long as, and so, oh, I'm going to tell you that a lot of municipalities may put their transfer tax in their general fund, and as long as it's less than what they're paying for their police department, they're good. The problem with that, again, is that the market takes a downturn and suddenly a, a revenue stream that you rely heavily on is, is gone. So, um.
And we've been there in the past, before you joined us.
And, and, I mean, we, we were here, I, I will, when that happened, when twenty, when two thousand eight and two thousand nine happened.
Exactly.
And I, I was in Dover, and Dover puts their transfer tax in the general fund. And the transfer tax went from over a million dollars to like three hundred thousand. And it, I mean, it left a huge hole, and, and, um, and a lot of towns had that same, that, that same problem, so.
But that's one of the reasons.
Responsible to move it out, so you don't rely on it for general operations.
And, yeah, and you're absolutely right. We're gonna have, we're gonna have feast and famine on transfer taxes. But the idea is if you lay aside enough in the feast years, you'll have something to draw on in the famine years.
Exactly.
So, you know, I, again, I, I absolutely agree with what Amory is saying and what Tim is saying, which is that, you know, it's an unreliable, uh, source of income. However, um, the idea here is, is to, is to norm it, you know? Um, so, so I think we did a smart thing in taking this money out of the operating fund, which is after all, what you need to operate the city, and putting it someplace else where we can more easily make cuts. I mean, you could always defer a capital project, well, not always, but almost always confer, defer a capital project.
Right.
Well, when drawing on reserves for a capital project, to me, makes me squirm a lot less than drawing on reserves for operating. So, um, so again, we have the, the street work. So the first two things are currently budgeted in, in this fiscal year. A portion of them will be paid before the end of the fiscal year, but a lot of it will carry forward. We didn't end up getting the debris alley and grease alley stuff included and part of that, so we can talk to Charlie about that. But the tennis courts, we have budgeted at seventy-three thousand, five hundred fifty dollars, and again, that's matched with a grant.
Amory, ju- just based on your description of how the, the fund can be used, and how, how is it, do the tennis courts fits into those descriptions?
It's a capital project.
Okay.
Oh, did I forget to mention capital?
Right.
I think I mentioned public safety. It can be used for public safety. It can be used for debt service. It can be used for capital.
Capital, okay.
So, um, so we did just get the bids in, and, um, we're in the process of evaluating them, so that the number on the tennis courts, um, could change some. Fortunately, it didn't come in, um, it, it, Charlie was, was pretty dead on in the estimating there, so, so that was good news. Um, and if you're looking for type, as you might notice that I spelled George H. P. Smith Park wrong. But, um, again, that was where we moved the, the money for the second phase of the playground out of, and that is another one that has ZenRec grants match it. We moved that out of the general fund in the Parks and Rec budget and into this fund. And then I also mentioned the, the police cars. Um, so I'm sure we will discuss these when we get into the departmental budgets and the capital.
And, Amory, may I interrupt you right, please, real quickly? Uh, you mentioned three categories, I believe, that the transfer tax can be used, could be applied to. And I wrote down safety, capital, and what was the third one?
Debt service, which is really capital.
Yeah.
So, and, and there could be more. Those are the things that, that always stuck in my brain. I can, I can provide you exactly what the statute says as a follow-up.
Okay.
Um, it, but it can't be used for, you know, just general operation.
Right.
Because, I mean, a lot of, like I said, a lot of towns put it in their general fund because as long as it's less than what it costs to operate their police department, you can say it goes for public safety. So there, before I get into what's not included, let me get back to the last slide real quick, because one thing I do want to point out, I, we've got the phase twenty-four and the ADA ramps and crosswalks. If you look at page twenty-six, and you look at the amended twenty twenty-one budget, so that's the third from the right. It's the, that we had three hundred sixty thousand for the phase twenty-four project, one hundred fifteen thousand for, um, ADA ramps and crosswalks, ten thousand for debris alley, um, fifteen, well, and that, that we are spending for the, um, Canalfront Park, and that's the evaluation of the dock. Um, a hundred fifty thousand for police department renovations, seventy-three thousand, five fifty for tennis courts. You know, so you have a number of things that were budgeted to be capital projects in this year that either will be partially spent or not spent in this fiscal year. So when you look at the second column from the right, and you look at that line kind of in the middle of the page that says excess revenues um, or deficit, at this point, if, if, if twelve thirty-one twenty was the, the last day of the fiscal year.
I'm sorry, Amory, I'm lost. Where is this line of excess revenue and deficit?
It, it's got a dark line. It's like right in the middle of the page.
Oh, yes, thank you.
It, um, you see right now, as, or as of the end of December, we would carry forward three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars and change. So we're moving the, the number of these projects forward to the next fiscal year. The revenue doesn't move forward, it just goes to prior year reserves. Um, if you look at FY twenty, we had, um, an excess of eight hundred eleven thousand dollars. So this is one, this is a fund where we have been regularly having money go to prior year reserves. So, so the reserves here are healthy, very healthy.
And where do we see that?
Um, oh, Lorraine, is that the, the very bottom of the page?
So at the bottom of the page, you're going to see where the cash balances are at the end of those respective, um, periods.
Yeah.
So you look at the end of December, we had cash of three point one million, and we had investments of one point six nine three.
Right.
Four point.
So I, I just wanted to kind of lay that out so that, you know, you see that we've got a number of things already included, and then you can see all of the things that we've been talking about for the last year that are not yet built into this. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of give you that, that context as we look at this list of things. So you'll recall in our capital projects meetings, we have talked about the, um, Monroe, let me see, oh, Lorraine did a list for me, um, the Monroe.
Adams Railroad.
Adams Rail, right. So that comes to, the Monroe portion was four hundred five thousand, Adams was seventy-one thousand, and Railroad was four hundred forty thousand. So one of the things that Ellen Lorraine and I talked about was dividing that into two chunks and, and possibly breaking that over two years, putting it in this fund. And then, if, if you recall, the other thing that Charlie talked about when he did the, the street, um, assessment work that was done, there were several funding levels at, you know, and how it would affect, you know, our overall street, um, health. And what we looked at was if we broke the Adams Monroe Railroad project over two years, so you say, I mean, you know, I mean, I like to talk in round numbers. I'm not the accountant. Um, it, so you say a half million a year for each of those. But you still don't want the other street maintenance stuff to fall behind. One of the funding levels that Charlie had provided us was a hundred thirty-five thousand. So if we say broke that big project into two years, and then funded a hundred thirty-five thousand, and, and Charlie will be prepared to talk about this when we get into details about the capital projects. That is something that we thought about potentially, um, you know, suggesting that we incorporate into the, the capital, uh, budget for this year. Then we've got, the downtown parking committee has been talking about three parking lots. Schley Avenue was ninety-two thousand, three hundred six.
Right.
Um, Otis Smith is twenty-six thousand, six hundred, or a hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-six, depending on whether you go with the, the, um, chorus pavement or the GeoBlock type chorus, um, surface. And then the, we've got the M and T lot at twenty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-nine, and that includes the new, the new meters. That, that would include the twelve thousand and change for the construction, the two thousand for bike racks, eighty-five hundred for the new meter, and then four thousand for the engineering.
And do you have this written down anywhere that you can send us?
Yeah, Lorraine, you can.
That's all in the parking report. It's all in the downtown parking report.
Okay, thanks.
Is it, this sheet that you gave me, is this something you can send out? Okay. Ellen Lorraine will send it out.
That's great. And, um, I had a question. Where is, um, Ocean View Boulevard in this?
It's interesting because, um, Charlie said that based on the assessment that was done, not all of Ocean View Boulevard needs to be rebuilt. And that when you get into the, that, the street assessment that was done, um, at the hundred thirty-five thousand dollar investment per year, it doesn't come in until after the, the five-year horizon.
Right.
Ooh, isn't that in rougher shape than that?
Um, so there, I'm trying to, he didn't.
That's, I didn't focus on that when we got Charlie's, uh, rolling assessment.
Well, because he didn't, he, he hasn't provided, he, he's still doing a lot of, like, number crunching on it, so.
Okay.
His, I'm looking, yeah, the email that I have here where he, he has the detail, it, it does not say. But he said that I think at the, the higher level of investment, it would be in the five-year horizon, a portion of it.
A million overlay portion or the rebuild portion? Or, or is that not the way they're, they're divided?
Do you, do you have that email handy? Oh, Lorraine, since I'm sharing my screen, I don't think I can go find the email.
The original portion of that, of that, of Ocean View has to be rebuilt.
The, the phase one.
Yes.
To Bay Hill.
Great.
I mean, not Bay Hill.
Uh, to, after the earthquake.
Okay. So would that be done first, you think, Ted, and the?
I would think so, yeah, because the back, the back is in better shape.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a figure, like around a million dollars for that reconstruction?
Yes, but that was the whole, that was the whole redo of the, the entire, of Ocean View Boulevard.
So I'm hearing two things. The first is, I'm, I had always thought that phase one was, ran from Bay Avenue to baby, basically Harbor Health. But I think what I'm hearing is that some portion, that the portion that has to be rebuilt is less than that, and that the portion other, and that the balance of Ocean View is in better shape than we had originally been led to believe when we were looking at that million-dollar investment. Is that right?
What I, that was one of my takeaways from Charlie. Did you find that email where we asked the question, Ellen Lorraine?
Yeah, I'm looking for it here.
And, and again, he'll, he'll be prepared to, to kind of get into, to the.
I don't think we get into all of that today. Let him, let him.
Well, we, we, we won't, but I mean, I think it's, I think it's really important that we, instead of going by that sort of mechanical, time-based phasing, uh, document that we had, we now have taken the time and spent the money to look and see what the pavement. Document that we had, we now have taken the time and spent the money to look and see what the pavement really is like. And that that this may be an instance where that means that is beneficial from a budgetary standpoint. There obviously would be other places where it may not be, but.
Right.
But on a long stretch like that. You know, i- if 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 a portion of that is in. Better shape, that's great. I mean, having just come from a place where every. Half mile or so, there's another sign that says frost heaves. You know, the condition of Ocean View does not.
Did that give you some pause?
No, no, I mean, look, the. A- as you know, I I I have been sort of.
I'm just kidding.
I I I I have never. Thought that our pavement was quite as bad as some people would lead one to believe. Now, maybe my standards are different. But and and I'll say, you know, having spent all those years in Washington with the man, the man eating potholes.
And you come from Kentucky.
Yeah, we didn't have good roads in Kentucky.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so Ellen Lorraine, you just sent me the email, but I don't see where it addresses Ocean View.
At the top. This is under the hundred and thirty five thousand per year, five year plan, Ocean View Boulevard is obviously outside that timeframe.
Oh, okay, I see. Okay, it the wrong email opened up. Okay. What so he so he says when street maintenance spreadsheet is updated, okay. If we did two hundred forty thousand a year for the five year plan. Ocean View Boulevard from Bluebird to Duchess would be a year four project at a total cost of a hundred sixty four thousand dollars.
That's a total rebuild, right?
He he did not say.
Okay.
What was the number?
One hundred sixty four thousand.
That's not a total rebuild.
Rebuild number, so.
And that's just that's just from from Pilot Town to to Duchess Court, a separate.
Bluebird to Duchess.
I'm sorry.
Very far.
Bluebird.
Bluebird is on the other side of 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 Fourth Street, I believe.
Right, it is.
I thought, yeah, it is. So what's New Road have to do with anything? I'm sorry, I'm missing something.
So.
Road and Ocean, you mean from? New Road and Ocean View don't intersect.
Bluebird.
Yeah, they.
Bluebird. Bluebird.
Bluebird, Bluebird. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, New Road. I'm like, what? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now I get it. Um. We we also have not budgeted in here the the beach parking lot lighting, which is estimated at about three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
The weight finding. They did send.
That was broken down.
It's awesome.
Did I send that out to you guys?
I don't think so.
I don't think I got it.
Okay, I'll send you what what because he did follow up with something.
You you sent out the budget document.
I think I got it.
Yeah. Yeah. When did that come in, please?
It would have been, he sent it to me Monday, so I would have probably sent it to you Tuesday.
Right.
Group group one, which included parking and pedestrian was. Around a hundred and ten K.
Exactly.
So. So if you wanted to include just that portion, that would that's the price on that. The the restaurants at the Rollins Center, again. It's not currently in there. I think it probably should be. The maintenance department has raised the issue that they need a new roof gutters and some ceiling repairs. So. Sometimes it rains in the building, so we need to address that.
Is there an estimate on that?
Well, yes, but they had provided us an estimate for a metal roof. And. Well, there is a metal roof there now. A metal roof is is significantly more than a. Asphalt shingle roof, so we were going to have them get prices for that.
The the other thing that.
Building needs to please.
This is the building, if you are going. Toward. Washington, it's on your left at the end there.
It's the older building.
It's between Schley Avenue and the trail.
Yeah, so is this the actual garage, what I would call the garage where they do the maintenance work? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's an existing metal roof. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Has has the metal roof ever been maintained?
That is a good question. I know that Allison had somebody look at it and apparently it needs to be replaced.
But I don't see on this list of capital projects that we need to talk about also on here is what might have to be done at the Fisher Martin House.
Right, now that would go, we we have that account for the Fisher Martin House.
Yeah, but that's only fourteen thousand dollars.
I thought it was more than that.
It is more. About thirty three, thirty four thousand.
Is it that much?
What is the issue with the Fisher Martin House, please?
Of re- serious leaks. Okay, so the investment is the according to this, the investment is as as of twenty seven thirty three, is that what you're saying?
The investment is twenty seven at the end of December.
Right.
The money market has sixty eight hundred.
Okay, so that I I didn't I didn't see the money market as being attributed to the Fisher Martin House. Investments was, that's what I was, that was the number I was using. Thank you for the clarification.
And I know Allison has met with contractors to to. To develop the scope and get the. Get some prices. I don't believe we have pricing yet.
No, but we need to get it because that that's an ongoing problem.
Right.
And these are roof leaks, is that correct?
It's not roof leak, it's window leaks.
Oh.
It's at the garage is where the. Where the roof leaks.
And so the Fisher Martin endowment would pay for that as far as.
It it.
I think you're looking at. You're looking at almost all of that money being into the Fisher Martin House, but from what I've seen.
Then let.
There's a lot of damage there.
And I'm hoping we can wipe that account out, get it off our books. It's one of those teeny little things that dribble on forever.
Yeah, well, this will take care of it, Rob.
Good.
I think it will.
Emery, you you've been running down some numbers. I didn't catch them all. Is there something that you can send out that'll cover the items not included capital projects?
Yeah, so Ellen Lorraine put together a a listing of. All of the capital projects that we're looking at, capital projects and capital equipment purchases. So we've got, you know, the the vehicles. And things on there as well.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, so she will send that out.
And Marie, I know that Tim and I have made this pitch before, but I just looking at this too, I think that Schley Avenue could really use a master plan because. You know, it sounds like a roof leak, you're gonna look at getting new leaf, new trucks. And there's nowhere really to put the trucks to.
Yeah.
Keep them from, you you know, the weather and things like that. We're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on a leaf, you know, obviously. You know, we want to kind of have a place maybe to. Put a lean to some 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 kind of structure, maybe to. Help preserve the life of them, maybe.
Mayor, do you want to talk about how that?
Right, we've actually, I was just gonna bring it up. Thank you, Emery. We've actually had the conversation with Darren and press that we should actually look that we should jointly look into a master plan for the whole Schley Avenue section. Between Washington and Franklin and how it would be re- redeveloped.
Right.
Obviously, the building where Rick Melendez has his office and where they have the staff room is in good shape. It's less than twenty years old. It's probably more like. About twelve years old. But a lot of the other buildings are are really quite old and. Like the like the building that we're talking about that needs a new roof, that's. At one point, that was said to be at the end of its usable lifespan. So I think we need to look, we need to look at a whole redevelopment of how that works. Okay?
Thanks, man.
And Ted, when you spoke with press and Darren, were they, did they seem? Receptive to this idea of developing a master plan, working towards that?
I think so. Obviously, nobody put a, you know, it was it was an initial conversation we had.
Sure.
About a month ago. And so we're working on it. We'll bring it back when we meet with them again.
And and Marie, when you send us these things, Ellen Lorraine, when you do, would it make sense to post them on the next budget agenda to?
We could do that.
They're public. Great, thank you.
Some of these things have been evolving as as recently as this morning.
Oh, I bet, I bet. I know you're working very hard, both of you, and I really think we all appreciate it very much.
So.
Yeah.
Um, we we also do not have in here police department renovations. And if you recall, when we. Last had a capital projects meeting. The discussion was. Before we go down the road of any schematic design or. Any. Real architectural drawings that we would first start with a programming. So. I need to check. I'm not sure that I got a proposal from GMV for that. But. I also don't know that I. That council agreed to take that step. So that's something that we definitely want to. Nail down kind of in in this process of, do we want to to move that next step? We need to figure something out because. You know, i- if we're not going to do real renovations, we at least have some flooring and countertops and stuff that. At the very least, need to be addressed. And then the Canal Front Park boardwalk, you'll recall that we had gotten a. We've gotten cost estimates for somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred twenty five thousand dollars. And I think that was last year. We looked at it and said. Let's do an assessment first because I think there was some concern about where there is other issues that. You know, if we put new decking on, are there underlying issues that are going to need to be addressed? I talked to Charlie about that last week and hopefully we should have something soon.
Isn't there some work done? Some remedial work done this past summer with the seasonal employees?
Yeah, the the seasonal employees.
Working on that boardwalk.
Yeah, so so the seasonal employees always do some degree of work on on, you know, the dock and. Just the Marina in general. As it relates to the boards, typically what they've done is they've turned over the boards. So, you know, you you only can do that once, really.
Right.
Back to where you were.
And that's what that's pretty much what they've been doing.
Right.
There was less done this past year than there was the year before.
So.
I I know that our community does a lot, but with these types of projects, is it? If there would be a group that would get together to sort of take that on as a project, is there anything that's against sort of. Safety components, as long as you get permitting and all that? Could that be something that we put out there as a project for the community?
It. Possible. I mean, if it's a matter of re decking, I think that's definitely more doable. You know, the the type of hardwood that we, you know, that Allison had gotten quoted. That they have down at the Indian River Inlet Marina. I'm not, I guess the the question is, what type of of nail gun do you need to?
Well, they have, they use E-Pay down there.
Yeah. I don't think you use a nail gun, you use screws.
Yeah, all decking would be screwed down, not nailed.
Right.
You can tell I don't, I don't do these.
Yeah.
But but I will say, we built the deck at my house. I just didn't participate.
Again, just an idea where we can come together as a community. And if this is, you know, if we're going to be in COVID this summer, it could be something that. We work on together as a community that could be done outside of doors.
So I I know that for Habitat for Humanity. Does not allow. Volunteers on their construction site under age sixteen. So there's probably kind of some safety parameters if we're using tools and things.
There's also the work in concentration you need to look into before you take that.
Yeah, that's that's kind of where I was getting at is, you know, then also. What, you know, the quality of it when it's done, you know, th- those kinds of things is kind of what I was thinking of safety wise, you know, how do we ensure that?
Right. But I've seen.
And I and.
Like playground builds and stuff where you have a day where the community comes out and helps assemble the playground. So it it's certainly something that happens.
You know, one thing I'll jump in and say at this point in time is, is that if we are going to, in effect, recapitalize the dock area, the deck area. And I understand the need for that. I think we should only do that if we commit ourselves to a. A serious maintenance program. And that would include, depending upon the material that's selected, that the the wood is properly treated once it's installed, once it's been. You know, exposed to the elements for a certain period of time, that if it requires. Some kind of treatment that it's actually done and done on schedule.
Right.
And that's just one example of maintenance, the idea of using some kind of a wood treatment program.
The the next thing we have on here is body cameras. Police Department now. The the governor, I'm sure you saw it included some funding for body cameras in in his budget. I've heard differing reports, even even when we had it, when we had our COVID call with the governor. It it wasn't clear to me. It sounds to me like that has primarily been focused on body cameras for state police agencies.
Same takeaway, Emory. It was for state troopers, not for local police.
Right, so I'm not sure that. The. State funding available for us. We can certainly ask the question. The the chief has estimated a cost at sixty three thousand dollars with twenty four thousand five hundred of that being in year one.
Say again, please, Emery.
Cost of sixty three thousand dollars. But twenty four thousand five hundred of that would be in year one. And this will be on the sheet that Ellen Lorraine sends out.
Well, we're we're the rest.
We don't have this.
Oh, and so that would have been what you're gonna send.
Yeah.
Right. Oh.
I saw you taking notes, so I figured I'd try to save you the.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um. And then. The the three last things that we, in terms of capital, things that we have not included is a utility pickup truck that was requested for the maintenance department. An additional trash truck. We have one that's on its last leg. And a vehicle, we did talk about this briefly earlier, for parking enforcement for. You know, what one thing as it relates to parking enforcement for Lewis Beach, as it relates to the revenue, we didn't really add. Revenue anticipating a lot of ticket revenue from that because we we just have no sense of of how it will work. Just a an example of recent, we have brought in the the parking enforcement. Kind of on a randomized basis to deal with the three hour maximum downtown. And in the first week, they issued. Twenty nine tickets and the second week they issued four. And the merchants all reported that you could tell a difference in terms of available parking between week one and week two. So, you know. You don't. You know, the purpose of enforcement is not to make money, so that the hope is that, you know, people know they're out there and maybe they don't need to give too many tickets. So. We didn't want to, you know, over budget for the the revenue there.
And and Marie, with the inclusion of a full time, is that the anticipation then is that we will as it's. As a city start enforcing parking and charging parking year round then?
Not charging, but you know, when. When we have something come up where. You know, we we can do, I think, more consistent randomized enforcement so that people, I mean, unfortunately, the the. You know, common, the the conventional wisdom out there has been. The meters go off on October fourteenth and after that, the city's not enforcing. So. All of the employees. So all of the employees have said, we know they're not enforcing. They know the rules there, but a rule, a rule's only as good as, as the enforcement. Um, and, I mean, the, every call that I'm aware of that we got that when we started doing the enforcement was from somebody who worked downtown.
And every call we've had that about it has been positive in terms of the merchants calling.
The merchants have been very thankful. So, so I think it's important that we have, even if it's not all day, every day, a consistent randomized enforcement or the ability to the, um, you get a call this, you know, we've had contractors that park downtown all day.
Yeah.
Contractor's been parked here all day. We, we then have the, the person here who can go out and, and take care of that. And then also deal with kind of the administrative things that need to be dealt with in the off season as well.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the last thing on the items not included list is the building cleaning contract. Um, and, and we really kind of wanted to, to talk to you and really have a discussion about this. Um, with COVID, we have been using a private cleaning service to clean the restrooms twice a day. All, all of the public restrooms and, um, we put out a, um, request for bids for cleaning contracts. And, you know, we, we got the, the numbers back in. You know, uh, without getting too far into the weeds on that, you know, we're, we're looking about, you know, a hundred thousand plus a year for just standard cleaning. So this wouldn't be the extra COVID cleaning. This would be all city facilities. So it would be, you know, the, the Met House, the meeting room at the Rollin Center, City Hall, um, all the public restrooms for cleaning once a day. Um, COVID cleanings would be extra. And we, so we want to have a conversation, obviously not today, about whether this is something we want to do. Um, or whether we continue to have the, the maintenance staff do it. The maintenance staff, as, as you know, have requested an additional person. And Ellen Lorraine and I didn't feel that we could include both in the, the draft budget. Um, I guess fundamentally having a concern that adding staff and then taking away a, a, a pretty significant responsibility. Um, so we, we said we will include one of these in the base budget, which is more meaningful to you. And, um, the feedback we got is that they felt they needed the, the additional staff person more, even if it meant that they still cleaned.
Emory, could you get us a, a, some kind of a feel for how much of their time is spent on what this new cleaner would do?
Yep. And, and I'm pretty sure Rick's on here, but if not, I'll, I'll follow up with him.
Emory, how, how does the library, for example, take care of those? Could we potentially avail ourselves of a situation where we lease the services of our building cleaning crew, for example?
Probably not. I mean, because, uh, so, I mean, typically, so that on a typical, say, summer morning, um, you've got two people who come in early. So they don't, they, they come in, you know, during the summer, our guys start at six. They, they'll come in at five, start cleaning restrooms. After they're done cleaning restrooms, they go and, and jump on a trash truck. So you've got, um, typically you have one trash truck that's short a person and one or two trash trucks that's short a person until the restrooms are finished being cleaned. So, you know, that, that's kind of where the, the issue is. It's, um, you know, especially at the busiest time of the year is where they have the least time available to clean, but it's also when the cleaning firms are most.
Emory, it might be helpful. Showed it sort of, uh, you know, we already, in your proposal that you got, you were cleaning, you're also having City Hall clean, which currently you have cleaned. What, when you back out what you're current, currently having done by professional cleaners versus the, the estimate you got, do you know what the difference is there? It's not, is it a hundred thousand dollars difference? I don't think so.
It's not a hundred thousand. Do you, do you remember Ellen Lorraine? I know we, we looked at that and I don't have that number handy.
Because I think we're having Canalfront Park and, and, uh, we were before COVID, having Canalfront Park and City Hall cleaned professionally, right?
Right. And we still are.
Yes. And they also, that includes the police department. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and BPW, BPW uses the same service?
No. BPW is responsible for cleaning on their side. The one thing we did add was the restroom over there because our staff also used the restroom and, and we were getting a lot of complaints.
There was an issue over there.
Yeah. But are they using the same clean, does the same service? Okay, so separate.
They clean their own things. I think their staff does their cleaning.
And so the, uh, the, the common room, the break room, uh, that is shared, is that not by BPW and the city?
The city, um, pays for the cleaning for that.
Okay.
On, on the other hand, the BPW, um, keeps the, the paper products and, you know, plastic utensils stocked.
Sure. Okay. And, all right.
Andrew, we'll go back to your question. The, the one time we did clean the restrooms over for BPW, or they, they had a contract and they were using the same service the city was. And then they took it on themselves. They canceled their contract. And then there were some issues with, since our employees were using those restrooms as well, there were some issues. And so then we went back to cleaning it.
Yeah, I was just wondering, my concept was just, we have a central sort of like, again, maintenance department that then, you know, quasi government, like the library could lease out and pay, you know, pay something back or BPW, et cetera, but you, you're just all tapping into the same in-house.
I, I think what we need to take away from the private business community.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Yeah, yeah. I get it. Yep.
Um, so when we talk about the maintenance budget, obviously we can, we can talk about that. And then, you know, Rick and Kenny and Allison can, can kind of speak to the, the specific issues you raised, including how much time is spent on these things. And, um, you know, one other thing, the, the other thing is that on weekends, our, our maintenance staff comes in and they clean all the bathrooms in the morning. So.
The one comment I will throw in at this point in time about maintenance and the bathroom business is, um, I think it would, I really like the idea that the cleaning is done early in the morning. But I think we need coverage late in the afternoon too, or early evenings. And what is not? Pardon?
Uh, I absolutely agree. Um, that, that has been one of, one of the issues is by two o'clock, especially on the beaches, the bathrooms are kind of nasty.
Yeah.
And downtown.
Yes, downtown is, yep, yep. Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Right. So going back to the what the current draft has drawing from prior year reserves. So obviously, the draft comes to you, you can slice, dice, cut, add, subtract, any of those things. Um, but as it stands now, i- if, you know, if it were adopted after this today, it would pull 384,575,000 from prior year reserves. For that reason, we have provided to you, um, some information on what the, um, possible revenues are that we could, um, look at when they were last increased and what you, what you could expect from that. So.
Do you have a current estimate or forecast for the 12 months ending in March of what our contribution to the reserves will be?
I would need to look and, um, project that out.
I'm just, I'm, it, it's not important to get an exact number, but it's along the lines that Bonnie was thinking that if, if we're contributing as much to reserves as we plan to take out, it's really, um, not.
So, so, um, and again, this is pre-audit, but, um, so in fiscal 2020, we actually drew from reserve 260,899 dollars. But that had to do with the retirement incentive. So, um, that, that was a one-time, um, a, a one-time cost that, you know, you'll recall that we did kind of how long it would take to, I think we figured two and a half years, um, it would pay, pay back this even. So, so last year is not a good year to, to look at for that. The fiscal year 2019, we ended the year 232,000 with excess revenue that went to reserves. Um, so if that gives you a sense, I don't, Ellen, you can probably go back further more easily than I could.
Yeah, I, I think Rob raises a very good point, which is before we talk about the need to increase revenue, I think we have to figure out, and Ellen Lorraine's projection in that regard would be very helpful. You know, what, are we in fact doing any damage by pulling out of reserves? You know, because if, if, if the, if, if, if the, if the bucket is being emptied out, but it's also being refilled and you end up with about the same level, you don't have to worry about increasing revenues.
But, um, so on Monday, we will have the financial report from January, which will reflect one more year, one more month's expenses, but it will also reflect, um, you know, a, a healthy portion of business licenses and gross receipts rental costs.
Right. And the gross receipts rental taxes in particular will be very interesting, since we've all speculated in the past that and, you know, an odd outgrowth of the whole COVID thing could be a, a, a higher number um, due to increased rentals as people stay closer to home. So that'll be an interesting number.
Or as they stayed in the, later into the season because they didn't have to get back for their kids to go to school.
Exactly. Exact. So that'll be interesting to see.
Emory, when do we have to adopt this? I mean, my, my question around that is maybe Bonnie can help with this is whether it's worth vetting with the finance committee, some of these concepts. Um, we, do we have, will we have time to do that before the council?
You've got.
Yeah, we have to adopt it, um, in March.
March.
March 15th, we have a, um, special meeting that we will have at six o'clock, um, for the adoption of the budget. And.
Emory, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, we only have to adopt it by the end of March.
Right. Oh, yes, you have time. But e- even if you wanted the, the finance committee to meet in two or three weeks. Um.
Start.
I think you have to adopt it by, you have to adopt it by the middle of March in order for, uh, finance department to be able to do things.
Well, mainly send out tax bills, because we try to.
Send out tax bills and other, and other, you know.
Yeah, but that's only an issue if we raise the, the real property taxes, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll have a feel for that well before then.
Yes, exactly.
Our T for today, or as of today, and we are down compared to where we were last year.
Sorry, down in what, Emory? I mean, Ellen Lorraine?
GRRT, Grace.
GRRT.
And what, where are we in terms of collections?
We collected as of today, 377,000.
Right. But I mean, do you have a sense of, what, when, when was GRRT do?
February 1st.
Okay, so we, today is the, uh, what, fifth?
Yes.
So do you have a sense, are we running ahead of, in, in terms of people paying?
Year to date.
Yeah. Are they basically, are we basically getting, uh, you know, a, a good, um, absorption rate? Or are people a little behind? Or do you have any sense? Is there any way to know?
It's hard to tell. I know that our total revenue collected is down. Now, is that, uh, less people are reporting? Or is it the dollar value is less? That would take some research.
So GRRT collections is as, the number you're looking at to do the comparison is as of what date? What, how, how recent, how up to date is that, is the dollars?
Of what we've collected through yesterday.
Yesterday, okay.
Okay. Do the, do the collections dribble in? I mean, do people pay late?
Yes, they do.
And is there a penalty for paying late?
One and a half percent.
Okay.
And also you have to look at the, the postal service. I, I can tell you that the postal service has not been reliable in delivering stuff if people choose to mail it in. Uh, so, you know.
You mean that Christmas card I got yesterday?
I actually did receive a, I actually sent a Christmas card that was received last week. It was on the, was sent on the 20th of December.
Yep.
Yeah, I've got late fees assessed by people.
Yes, exactly. So, you know, I think that we probably, you know, we don't know.
You know, I, I can't believe, we're going to have to waive any late fees because, you know, it, well, I mean, depending on the postmark, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, what, uh, but isn't it possible that some people are paying electronically? Didn't we hear that earlier?
Yeah, yeah.
And what, what, what percentage do you, uh, do you know, Ellen Lorraine, uh, what percentage comes in electronically in the past, past years?
I don't know currently. Um, I could look into that.
I mean, I can tell you that when I paid GRT and what Brooke did, we always did it by, we're on time, but we always did it by check. We, we just.
I know we see a ton of checks come in.
Yeah.
I always pay it by check.
So to Bonnie's question, we might be, be even with last year after all, depending on how.
At the time, it's done, yes.
Well, yeah.
But we're not, you know, I think we were kind of hoping we'd be running ahead.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's the, the part that's a little disappointing.
Well, there was COVID.
Right. I, I mean, I think we were thinking that, we were thinking, we were thinking that one of our silver linings for the last year would be that because people extended their season, it, um, might have stayed close to home or whatever, you know, they canceled the trips where they had to fly, so they came to the beach. Um, but so far, it's not, what, what we might have is, is just more people with their second residences.
Let, let me ask you, let me ask you a different question. Do, um, do the, do the real estate companies that manage rentals, do they they hold the RRT until it's due, right?
It depends on the real estate company. I know some of them that pay as they go.
Okay, so my only, the only thing, I was only bringing it up because that, depending on whether they've weighed in or not, assuming they held it, that could also be a factor. I mean, it'll be what it'll be.
Right.
Right.
We'll have another month of data before we, um, before we pass the budget.
That's right.
Two.
Yeah, huh, okay.
Emory, on the, on the.
Stream that we, in our projection, have down from 550, which we projected last year to 500, just because, um, we want to see it. I'm sorry, Andrew.
That's okay. On the, on the, both the business district and the mercantile licenses, it says, are you able to tell us when the last time they were increased before those dates?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right here on the last page. The mercantile licenses were released, increased in 2015.
I mean, prior to that.
Oh.
So that was on, Ellen Lorraine had, I, I forwarded an email with the budget, but, um.
Okay, I'll look on that. I'll look on that.
It, it's right in front of me. Oh, no, it's not. It was the.
What page is that reported on?
The very back page, last page.
Andrew, I'll tell you, um, anecdotally, and I don't remember exactly, but the, uh, these, these fees went through the, the finance committee and it had been a good long time.
Right. It had been.
For the, for the licensure fees.
That, that's my concern is if, if it was 20 years prior, now we're doing it like within the last five or six years, it doesn't.
It was, it was every bit of 10, I think, Andrew.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I think, I think increasing those fees could be a little premature. Um, you know, it, it's been a much longer time since we increased the property tax. And as for gross receipts rental tax, we looked at this at one point, um, when we were doing the, uh, the financial. when we were doing the, the financial, Rob will recall this, when we did the, the financial strategy report. And I can find that document and send it out to people, but five percent was kind of the top of the register for this, for this area. So I don't think that it's probably credible to go over five, where, where we are there. I mean, I hate to, I, I don't want people to firebomb my house, but the most logical case to, to increase it is probably on the property tax end.
And just the, the mercantile licenses, while the, the fees are modest, it, it could just be a kick in the stomach to the business community that's already struggling.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
I, I'll say this, there's, there's always a tear in this kind of budgeting, as everybody knows, between user fees and general taxes. And most governments try, I mean, certainly in the federal government, it's true that you, you do your best to, to try to, try to calibrate the fees to the actual users of the services. So, you know, business fees that consumes the building department and the finance department and the parking department, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, the, there's, there's, when you look at these things, you always want to try to decide who should pay and should it be the people who are actually, you know, when the operating expenses go up, is it fairer to have the people who are, who are causing those increases bear the cost as opposed to a general tax? From, you know, I doubt, I probably, I, I want to put a percentage on it, but most of Lewis has no reason to interact with most city departments most of the time. So, you know, that, there's always the user fee versus general, general tax issues. And it's a fairness question. So, you know, this is something to throw in the pot.
All right. Are there any other questions about this?
That, that's the presentation we have. Obviously, we have plans to go into, to greater detail on each department and.
Right. Yeah, this is just a good overview.
No, it's great. Thank you, Emery and Ellen Lorraine. Very, very helpful. And everybody else who contributed to this.
And you know Ellen Lorraine does all the heavy lifting.
Yeah.
She just prints me the drafts and I mark them up and we go through, but she does all the, the hard work.
All right. So we are at, we are at this point, two and a half hours into this. And Emery, you proposed for next week, we would, we would pick up.
So we, we published all of the agendas and we
Right.
included other budget discussion on all of them so that we can, you know, kind of bring up anything that was hanging out there. So next week we have on here, maintenance department, parks and marina, building department, planning office, city manager's office, and finance department.
Is that now posted to that next week's agenda, those departments?
Right.
Okay.
There'll be representatives of, you know, with everybody, of each of those departments coming before us with their information that we can talk about. At those, at each of those meetings coming up over the next several weeks. Unless there is something else to talk about today, I think, did you have anything else you wanted to cover today, Emery or Ellen Lorraine?
No, I don't think there'd be many changes on next week's.
No, I don't see any changes this week. But I do think getting a better, getting that list out, and I see you've sent it of what the, the projects that were not listed or not included is, is helpful for everybody to at least begin to think about.
Now update the budget with the January figures.
That would be very helpful. That gives us, gets us closer. So then we really only are lacking two months. And, you know, and then as, if you could, maybe, there may be a pickup in, in your G R R T results between now and next week. So if you just have that number available to share with us, I think that would be useful. Obviously, right now you're coming up quite shy, but remember this is the fifth of February and they weren't due until the first, so.
Just, just out of curiosity, if we do, if we do find that we're not seeing the G R T that we, we were expecting, is that something we could ask host compliance to analyze for us and to, to see where we may be missing people?
That is one of the things that they will do. The, the, I think the limiting factor is that because we didn't launch with them until December, they're not going to, I mean, they, I think they had data going back to like September or something, because that's all right, Ellen Lorraine. So they're not going to have the, the 12-month data to.
Yeah. We can also.
You could share it with them.
Yeah, we could also remind them we could also, we could also remind them that, that remind them, people at the council meeting on Monday night, that gross rental sheet tax were due and we were, you know, still looking forward to receiving them. We have done that in the past and it has resulted in some change positively. And I don't mind making that, I, I think we can sort of make that announcement Monday night.
Am I also wrong in assuming that that's, that host compliance is based on like utility readings and things? Is that what, what is determined?
They use, they actually use the online platforms. So they're not
Right.
the stuff that's like listed with Gallo or Lewis Realty or any of those. But those aren't the ones that we're missing. It's, it, it's the VRBO, Airbnb.
Right.
I mean, there's, I think they said over a hundred fifty online platforms now that are.
Okay.
So, so that's, that's what they're, that's what they're looking at.
And we have no way of tracking from all the house sales that have occurred during this past year. How many of those have been converted into VRBOs or Airbnbs, do we? I'm, I mean.
Really?
Right.
That's one of the things that they should be picking up when they're
Right.
When they're reviews.
Yeah. Well, if they go back as far as September, I would think that most of those property owners were anticipating fall rentals. So chances are that they, their homes would be listed in the inventories of available homes. And they should, they might find a, you know, a nice pot of gold right there for us.
One can always hope.
Yeah, I see the, the rainbows out there right now.
Well, go find the pot of gold, Tim. Well, that'll be a good weekend project for you.
I don't need any more projects, Ted. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing further to bring, bring forward this afternoon, I think we've had a good overview. I thank Emery and Ellen Lorraine for your diligence in getting this put together again. Obviously, there'll be lots of, you know, lots of questions as we go along. And I think next week when we actually get into looking at individual departments, it'll be very helpful. So if there's nothing further, how about a motion to adjourn? Right.
Hi.
Hi.
So is there no, there's no executive session then?
No.
You want to?
I don't want one.
Are you feeling like we need to have one here?
It was on, it was on the agenda, so.
I don't think we need to have one. We'll, we'll have one on Monday.
Oh, sounds good.
But we put it on all the budget agendas because there are some things that could come up in the budget discussion as it relates.
Always there.
I see.
Certain staff as it relates to their, you know, performance qualifications.
Okay. And we will, we'll go to executive session if we get down to talking about raises and things.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a great weekend. Thank you.
You all too. Thank you. Bye-bye. Bye.